Council meeting was called to order at 6:00 p.m. My time. Present, Council President Christopher Shaw on the Zoom or whatever internet we're using there, Councilmember Kevin Charbonneau, present in the room, Councilmember Clark Curtis, Councilmember Rick Alfred Chase, Treasury City Clerk James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delabria. Okay? Can I see anybody else? Frank? Okay.
Smith, Ms. Frank?
Oh, I'm sorry. The only administrator, Frank Chang. Please. Just kidding. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, additions, additions to the agenda. Councilmember, President Shaw. Councilmember Charbonneau?
Frank.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasury Johnson? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the regular meeting minutes of July 1, 2024, the special meeting minutes of July 8, 2024, payroll warrant for July 11, 2024, pardon me, accounts payable warrants for June 28, 2024, July 8, 2024, and liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events permits. So just for a little bit of clarification, there's been some confusion on the warrants. Sometimes we see warrants that have been approved on the interim weeks as they show up here, okay? So we just don't want it to look like, you know, they're not being slipped in, okay? It's just that they have been, I've been here during interim weeks, that the Treasury would like it, the city manager and I were discussing it, to try to make it a bit easier for everybody, and we're going to try to hold the interims, hopefully it's an emergency, but, you know, we'll figure it out when we work it through, we need to watch it. So it's not like you're seeing something dull, okay? It's not as dull. Councilmember Charbonneau, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. So, any other questions on the consent agenda?
I have one correction.
Okay.
On July 1st, the papers I gave to Mr. Johnson weren't included in the addition of the draft. I need to have those items added to it.
Okay, so specific documents don't automatically get included, it's just the minutes that get written up and are included. Any other questions on the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is decorum of alderman, and we will have a discussion on this. This was a request to be discussed, so, councilmember, would you like?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I requested the item be placed on the agenda if it's appropriate. I'd like to make a motion and then speak to it if there's a second.
Go ahead.
I move that the City Council formally censure Councilmember Kevin Charbonneau for his actions and his statements regarding fellow Councilmember Clark Curtis's brief tenure as constable, and as I said, if there's a second, I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm gonna open it up first for comments. Now I'm gonna bring it. Please, I just identify yourself and please speak through me.
Sure, Jennifer Beareland, resident of Newport, Vermont.
To the next item, decorum of alderman.
I understand. I do not understand why it is that if someone has concerns about conduct of a fellow council member, and they go to law enforcement and privately make that report, that somehow that rises to the level of a censure. It is Mr. Curtis who made it public, not Mr. Charbonneau. And Mr. Charbonneau is the one who has information that led him to take these steps. Every single person, whether a councilman acting as-
Please speak to the decorum of an alderman.
I am.
No, not councilmember, not council, decorum of an alderman.
I am speaking to the decorum, and I am saying that every council member acting as a councilman or a member of the general public has the right to go to law enforcement with concerns of illegality.
Okay, thank you for your legal opinion.
I'm not, you are done.
Thank you for your legal opinion.
It's not my legal opinion.
Thank you for your legal opinion. We are done.
It is not my legal opinion.
Ma'am?
Why do you want to put that to my mouth?
Ma'am? Okay, I'm gonna ask you, please sit or please leave. Your choice. Bringing it back here, okay? This is the decorum of an alderman, there was a motion and a second discussion. You would like to speak to it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since I joined the council on March 5th of this year, I've been pleased with the thoughtful level of deliberation among council and mayor, and with the growing relationship of confidence with one another and with our new city manager. I've even been hopeful about our prospects to repair and rebuild a similar confidence with the residents of Newport, many of whom care enough to show up for every meeting and to be a part of our process of governance. Councilmember Charbonneau's actions over the past month have made it extremely challenging to focus on the work of repairing that trust and focusing on the things that matter. In my judgment, his request for a formal police investigation of Councilmember Curtis could and should have been handled by sharing his concerns with the rest of us on council and executive session. I have heard nothing that leads me to believe that Councilmember Curtis took any action that puts members of our community at risk. Further, he resigned from his position as first constable when questions were raised about whether Vermont statute allows for a council member to serve in that position. Councilmember Charbonneau's decision not to participate in an executive session devoted to the topic "Evaluation of a Council Member" at the meeting on July 1st was a missed opportunity to have a thoughtful and civil conversation about how we hold one another accountable. In my judgment, the statement he read at the end of that public meeting was a personal attack on Councilmember Curtis's character and did not in any way address the supposed actions by Councilmember Curtis that would justify a call for a criminal investigation. Taken together, these choices made by Councilmember Charbonneau have made it extremely challenging for our council to function effectively in our effort to regain the public's trust and to deal head-on with the significant challenges confronting our city. I had met personally with Councilmember Charbonneau regarding this matter. Though I appreciated our thoughtful and civil conversation, I heard nothing from Councilmember Charbonneau that changes my perspective about the actions that he's taken. I explained my own concerns about the impact of his actions, and I requested that he consider making a public apology to Councilmember Curtis, and I let him know that in the absence of such an apology, I would feel compelled to address the matter publicly. A censure of Councilmember Charbonneau, if affirmed by the members of this council, has no legal implications. We have no authority to remove Councilmember Charbonneau from the position to which he was elected. My purpose is to assure our constituents that we are working to build healthy, effective relationships with one another in which we respectfully hold one another accountable. In my opinion, our goal for all of us together must be to change the culture of public battling that has characterized our city leadership for several years. So I want to be clear, my call for a censure is a calling in, not a calling out. It invites not just Councilmember Charbonneau, but each of us and all of our constituents as well, to develop healthy, non-combative ways to carry out our business. In my judgment, the only way to rebuild trust with one another is to stop the relentless public attacks against one another and to find constructive ways for all of us in this community to work together. I have no personal quarrel with Councilmember Charbonneau. We have had respectful conversation when we disagree, and we have discovered many things about which we agree. I look forward to continuing to work with Mayor Sullivan, President Vashon, and fellow councilmembers Curtis and Charbonneau, as well as with our city manager and staff and the members of our community over the coming months to overcome the challenges that confront us, and I invite my fellow councilmembers to join me in a vote to censure Council Charbonneau in that constructive spirit of calling in, not calling out.
Councilmembers, any further discussions yet? I have something to say, and I'd like everybody, please, fellow councilmembers, because before we take the vote, I just want you to digest this. Moving to censure an alderman is a serious action, and it should not be taken lightly. A successful censure motion is an official public declaration of the council that a member should be sanctioned for inappropriate conduct. Another reason to act deliberately with respect to a potential censure resolution is that the censure motion has limited practical impact. A censure resolution neither removes the privileges of the censured official nor the ability of the official to act. So nonetheless, considering a public censure motion demands clear-minded meticulous judgment. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nays.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, resolution to designate a public agency, PM 4, with an anticipated vote. And I'm going to ask the city manager to please assist. Okay, so I, there she is, okay. Ms. Finnegan, would you please speak to this? Thank you.
Is the audio working okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So these, this item agenda and the next one following it are forms for Vermont's Development Community Program, just requirements that the state needs. Pretty much the first one, so I'm not cheating, I'm not looking at the agenda, but the first one is just to review that you guys are okay with NVDA. And this is kind of also coming on the tails of a few months ago, Mike Walsh came up and the transferring of this grant agreement, but it was a slightly different form, and they're requesting this one. And then the next one is just to say that you guys have all the correct policies for going forward with procurement, and, yeah, so these two forms are just something that the state needs. And I've reviewed it with them, just to clarify, because I sat and talked about these forms with the mayor and also the city manager.
So we're going to, let me just be absolutely certain that you're asking for the approval for the resolution to designate a public agency using Form PM 4 and for the mayor to sign this resolution? Or, right, but I'm saying that's what you're asking for, correct? Okay, sir.
Yes. Yeah, no, there was one that-
Was there another one?
It checked most, yeah, there was one that came across the table a couple months ago, but it didn't quite check all the boxes, and this is like their standard form, very similar language achieves various levels, but just for their program, this is what they like to see.
So will this be replacing that, or will this just be an additional form? We'll just take it as an additional form? Okay.
Yes, I think it, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Any questions? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, so we're gonna print this, I'm gonna sort this. Will you fill in the rest?
Do we need a second motion for the second?
Mm-hmm. But what I'm trying to see is, and that's what I was trying to ask her. Does that count?
This is the rest of the paper.
Okay, so we'll do this one separate. Let me just sign off on this and pass this one around. Okay, so now... We're going to need a motion for the municipal policies and codes, is that correct? Carter, is that correct?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
This grant.
This is the Gardner Park one, the Gardner Park grant. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I am just going to sign off, and you're gonna-
I'll print it out. Yeah, so this is, that's my comment.
Okay, finally. And you'll get that somehow through Councilmember Charbonneau?
I will.
So now we're ready for, um, for Ia.
We pass.
Well, we put it together.
PMP 1.
That is what we just did right now, we put them, we joined them.
I just texted in, do you want to join here, just call?
I, we need him up there.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Finnegan. Thank you. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Yeah, so that's great.
Please, don't.
Hey, you wanna just pop on? There, mine is here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the audiovisual recording policy with an anticipated vote, and I'm going to ask our city attorney, Bariya Smith, to please lead us through this discussion.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I provided updated draft, and I tried to incorporate a lot of what the council advised they'd like to see changed in this policy. You'll see that I included a definition of harassment, which is exempt from the notice requirement. We also included a reference to federal law, which requires that if the person recording is not a party to a conversation, they do require consent of at least one party to the conversation. That situation will likely be rare where the person recording isn't a party to the conversation, but that isn't the federal rule when it comes to a third party, not a party in the conversation, recording the conversation. Consent is required of at least one party. We cleaned up the city police officer's exemption to essentially reference the state law and the Vermont Criminal Justice Council's model body-worn camera policy. We, I looked into the creating a hierarchy, I know we talk about the hierarchy regarding who these recordings can be shared with, but it's difficult, each situation is going to have its own set of facts, and it will be required, the facts will dictate who it's appropriate to share a recording with. A non-union employee wouldn't be sharing it with a union rep, so it's tough to include a hierarchy of who these go to, but we did allow for these recordings to be shared with the city manager and, depending on what the situation dictates, other appropriate persons. And just go back to harassment, the definition of harassment in the council, like I said, is still freedom of change here, but I tried to create the definition of harassment that was objective and something that we could apply. Now, it's always difficult to anticipate the situation you're trying to cover with these definitions, but I essentially tried to lay out what the analysis would be to determine if there's harassment occurring. So harassment means unwelcome conduct that is objectively hostile, offensive, demeaning, or unreasonably intimidating, including workplace violence. So if there is harassment, the employee could just start recording without notice if harassment or workplace violence is taking place. I know that was, I think, the major issue that was getting some councilmembers heartburn last time, so I tried to create the exception without it swallowing the rule. I think we've come pretty close to that, but I'm more than open. Any feedback or any questions?
And so, councillor, I just think that they're running off of what was in the packet-
Previous draft.
-with the previous draft. For some reason, the updated draft is not what I thought councilmembers had. Would there be a way for you to email that to everybody now?
Yeah.
Thank you. Or at least email it to the city manager who could quickly print off.
Yes.
That would be easier, I believe, so if everybody bear with us for a few seconds.
All right, so I'll mail it to you, Jonathan, just because that would be easier to- Did that come to you yet, Jonathan?
He went into his office to get it, so thank you, but, so now it's too embarrassing, I Councilwoman Smith, if you, could you possibly email that to Councilmember Charbonneau, because he's appearing online, and so he won't be able to get the printed version? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're just waiting for the city manager to get us our copies, councilmember, and then we'll get back into the discussion. we'll get back into the discussion. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We have our copies now.
Great.
Okay, so under section two, our document now has harassment with the definition.
Yeah, and for that definition, I have means unwelcome conduct that is objectively hostile, offensive, demeaning, or unreasonably intimidating, including workplace violence. So objectively means that we use the reasonable person standard. It's not as the sensibilities of that person, what they perceive to be. It's a third-party reasonable person viewing all of the facts as a whole would find this conduct to be unwelcome, objectively hostile, offensive, demeaning, or unreasonably intimidating. And then under section five, the exceptions, employees while recording harassment is exempt from the prohibition of no-seeker recording.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Councillor Member Charbonneau, do you have any questions so far?
Here's one under. If the habit of the eighth thousand children's harassment and not one spoke, would the employee recover the recorded, like a shipwreck event today?
I'm sorry, Kevin, let me try and, if the employee, so if there's harassment going on, is that what the facts are?
Right. Right. Well, let's say if the one instance that is recorded is not so much that an objective person were saying, well, that's harassment, but it's a series of those, in other words, separate instances, would the employee recover the recording back? For basically saying that, you know, one portion of that paper, no, you wouldn't think, well, that's harassment. But if you look at the totality, you could say, okay, look, this is harassment, and it's ongoing, it's...
Ladies, please.
...born with it.
Yeah.
To make up our part.
So I think that, I mean, that's a good question. This is for, the way it's worded, I'm trying to think of it, the way it's worded as it is right now, the incident recorded would have to meet the definition of harassment itself. So if the instant instance of recording doesn't meet the definition of harassment, everyone should have been notice, I'm going to record this activity, or I'm going to record this conversation. They could continue to record, they would just have to provide notice that they are recording to the people that are being recorded. Now, this isn't to say that, recording isn't the only evidence that's out there. People can provide testimony, witnesses can provide testimony to select word if there's a personnel incident that could be viewed as, all of these minor incidents together that wouldn't be objectively, objectively offensive or unwelcome on their own, but that's getting into a separate kind of personnel determination as to whether or not harassment, actionable harassment is occurring. It's a tough question, Kevin.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, that certainly it's a little work to interview witnesses and try to make the thing together, but I don't know that we necessarily have to somebody do that.
Right, and I'm trying to give you a straight answer based on the way this is written now.
Right.
I interpret that the instant, the isolated instance that's recorded without notice would have to constitute harassment, or there's physical violence occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? If you just hold your questions, we go through. Okay, next time. Councillor? Section six?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Section six, I essentially left pretty much the same as when we last told. We don't want to be recording privileged communications, city trade secrets, or other persons or entities' trade secrets, conversations and activities concerning communications information designated confidential by law. So people's, any financial or personal information on residents that the town has that is confidential by law, educational records, a school employee, I mean, it's more of a catch-all. When disclosing information that the city has, these are the most sensitive areas where we don't want to be creating more records than necessary, because the more records that are out there with this sensitive information, the more like, the harder it is to control and keep confidential and keep the controls for confidentiality. Section seven, that's about public...
Before you jump, I just want to say to any questions here. Councillor Member Charbonneau, do you have any questions on section six?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I apologize. Okay, councillor Smith?
Section seven is pretty much the same as where we left last time. A recording, whether or not it's exempt from the notice requirements, will likely be a public record in and of itself.
I'm sorry, councillor, could you just hold one second? Ladies, please. Ladies in the back, when you're whispering, we can't hear them, so please refrain if you want to. Please feel free to step outside and come back in. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor.
So this is, employees creating these records during their workday, they would likely fall under the definition of a public record. So, and we want to be able to catalog those. Whether or not they're exempt from record, from inspection and copies is another matter, but a public record is a public record and needs to be handled in accordance with the Public Records Act and the state schedules and the city's policy and record retention schedules. So this is to help ensure compliance with those policies as well. We have the chief of police dealing with the police records and the town manager dealing with the cataloging and maintenance of all other recordings that fall under this policy.
Any questions on this? Councillor Member Charbonneau, do you have any questions on section seven?
I do not, thank you.
And then section eight, like I said, I know we talked about perhaps creating some kind of hierarchy of with whom these records may be shared, but employees need to be able to speak with their own personal legal counsel and share information with them openly. They need to be able to talk with their union reps and share information with them openly. And I think it's best that they, that the options are open for these employees. Obviously, they need to provide it to the town manager to comply with the Public Records Act to preserve our public records. But with the other people, we believe this covers the necessary personnel that they may need to or may wish to share these recordings with. And we don't make it a mandatory, aside from the city manager, we don't make it a mandatory requirement, but allow the facts of the situations to allow for sharing a recording with the appropriate personnel. And Chris, does that make sense? I know you had been one of them suggesting something along those lines.
No, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Councillor Member Charbonneau, are you good with section eight?
No questions.
Thank you.
And then we have consequences for violation. This is, it says in the court that violators' policy may be subject to discipline up to an including termination. That doesn't mean that termination is the consequence or the only consequence. It would be, it would be, it would be discipline in compliance with the personnel policy. So that would be the structure of discipline outlined there.
What if the personnel policy goes a halfback?
If it, well, look, does the, so the personal policy doesn't, the personnel policy doesn't have discipline?
No. No. Always reful.
It addresses discipline, it just doesn't address questions on progressive discipline that we're going to be revisiting, so, but it does address.
So ultimately, if in the discretion of the superiors, if that's appropriate, the select board may find, depending on the recording, it may be more appropriate for, instead of the department head, for the city manager to address the discipline, or ultimately the select board may, I mean, not the, sorry, the city council may decide what is correct, the correct discretion. But it's the same options for discipline that are available for any other violations of city policy by employee.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just clarification. So if a union member needs a consequence, does that go to their negotiated agreement or whatever is listed out for grievances or progression of discipline in their...
Yeah, union members, their discipline is governed by their contract, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next section.
No retaliation, so this is to make clear to the, and department heads and supervisors that no employee shall be reprimanded or disciplined for providing notice of intentional recorder conversation or activity in compliance with this policy. So this is to make sure that if an employee says, hey, I'm going to be recording this conversation, the supervisor or department head can't discipline or adversely treat that employee for following this policy. We want people to follow this policy, and if they're following the policy, we shouldn't be discipling for providing notice that they're recording a conversation or activity.
Any questions on that? Councillor Member Charbonneau?
I'm good. Then finally, it just takes effect upon adoption by the city council. Unless you want to postpone the date, that it takes effect.
You have a question?
Yeah, so for the video recording, do both parties have to have consent unless it's harassment? I think that was the point I was confused about.
Can you hear that?
They're asking me, both parties need to have it unless it's harassment? Is that the question?
Yeah, that's my question, yeah.
It was for the video recording, was the question specific?
For a video recording, do both parties need to have consent to record harassment? If...
Now, I think the question, and help me if I'm wrong, the question was, does it only pertain to harassment?
Yes.
Or does it pertain to anything else where both parties need to have consent?
There's no consent required for recording of harassment.
But I'm thinking, like, the other circumstances is what I'm getting at. Like, no consent needs to be given for harassment, but if it's not harassment, and I thought Kevin's line of questioning was interesting, because harassing can be subtle, and it might only make sense like in a big-picture scale of things. So like, this thing, this thing, this thing, kind of look trivial all on their own, but together they can, they make a composite. So my question is, if it doesn't look like harassment, or if it isn't that on the front, can it still be one party activated?
Yes, you just have to say, I'm recording. You don't need their consent to record, you just need to say, I'm recording.
Okay, thank you.
Are we not into the public questions? That was for the press right now, after we hear the council's decision on whether they're going to move this forward. Okay, so... one more time, last round here. Councilmember Charbonneau, no further questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, now remember, we will be bringing you back if you all decide to vote on this now. So is there a motion to adopt the audio visual recording policy effective today? Or not?
So moved.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, okay. Please come up, identify yourselves, speak through me, and you'll give your answer.
Claire McIntyre, Newport, um, this goes back to some of what Mr. Charbonneau was saying, um, I have been in a position of hearing in a workplace, um, comments made about either an employee present or an employee absent that were demeaning, um, disrespectful, but given the circumstances, um, many left and treated it as a joke. I've been in circumstances where, and these could be supervisory or management.
Okay, now keep it tight to this particular policy that we are moving on.
Okay, I understand that recordings are not the only way to document manage, uh, harassment, am I correct in that?
Yes, well, asking your questions, we're making, I need to hear your questions, we're not going to give you legal advice right now, so we're talking about this policy that we just went through and the adoption of this particular policy that I'm saying.
If an employee hears the kind of situation I described, that employee, whether they have any recording ability of their own, would still be able to report to any level of management that what they, that employee considered to be harassment of another employee, present or absent, took place and was inappropriate and should be dealt with from a management point of view. Am I correct in assuming that that would be the case for the city?
Okay, so what I'm going to say is that we're talking about this particular policy, there are other means for harassment.
Okay, so there are, as long as there are other means.
Sure, yes, we are talking specifically now about this audio visual recording policy, but that does not provide, okay, if there are issues going through the respect, to the respective supervisors to make reports, does that help? Ms. Hopkins?
Jennifer Hopkins, City of Newport, of course, this goes blind. I asked a question before about the definitions, and in it, the definition of an employee, was that changed or not? If it was changed, I'd love to know what the change is, because we don't have it. If it wasn't, then I would like clarity on it, because I think the definition is confusing, to put it mildly. It says employee, including all city personnel, including department heads and city manager, there, I should say, there were comments in there, whether paid by the city or authorized city volunteers. So my question is about city volunteers.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Section. Lori Brem, City of Newport. Uh, section nine, uh, with whom the recordings may be shared, so the question is, once the
Wait, I'm sorry, section nine, consequences for violation?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, well, I have the old copy, because I'm reading it online. So it turns, section eight, okay, uh, with whom the recordings may be shared, um, so once the employee shares it with, say, the supervisor, legal counsel, union rep, city manager, is, is there other action taken, or is it just shared? What, what, to say that, where are those people going to do it? Are they just going to hang on to it? Do we have restrictions on what happens from that point?
Regarding the movement on the
Yeah, well, like the recording, so like, if the, if the employee went to the city manager and said, I've got this recording, what is his responsibility to do with the recording?
I'm sure.
Well, I guess, I guess that's the question, what is, what, does the buck stop there? Is that, does the buck stop with, so, legal counsel, does it stop with, is there more to that? I guess that's my question.
Regarding this policy, then the terminations will be from there, depending on the case. Ms. Grant?
Jennifer Beerle, resident in Port Romo. I have two questions for Baraya, one is
Please.
Okay, I have two questions through the air, hopefully to reach Baraya. What, how do you, how do you reconcile this with the whistleblower act? That's question number one. Question number two is, how, if an, if an employee is in a situation, um, we'll just, as an example, use like the example that Mr. Charbonneau offered, where it's an ongoing pattern, each individual incident might not rise to the level, but the cumulative pattern does, and the employee announces that they're going to record, um, can the employee be forbidden by the supervisor from recording? Thank you.
Any further discussion on this side?
Yes, I have one small thing. I would be interested if, if it doesn't raise an objection with our legal counsel to just add two words to the employee definition to clarify, so that it would read, employee includes all city personnel, including department heads and the city manager, whether paid by the city or serving as authorized city volunteers. So simply adding the word serving as to clarify the somewhat confusing language there.
So that's not my call, but you're more than welcome to make that change to the motion we're currently in for the board, and I have, I have no issue, I have no legal issue with that change.
Do we need a motion?
There was a friendly amendment to
Okay, that's a motion.
So there's a friendly amendment to add the word serving as before authorized city volunteers to the motion before us?
I'll second, right there.
Anything else, or good? Okay, so we have the amendment motion, and we have the second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it? I'm sorry, did I, Councilor?
I'll just, I'll bring my explanation.
Okay, give me one second, and I'll get to you for your explanation on your vote, is that all right? So all the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Councilmember Charbonneau, you may speak to your, um, name.
Uh, yeah, getting back to the, the policy where we're being disciplined, I think it will be good to, our personnel policy first, and good that process, like this and then for new policy, because right now, we have a report policy and no peer of discipline.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, yes.
May I, may I have a copy of that policy now that has been adopted?
Yes.
How can I get it?
Ready? There you go.
There were two words.
Right, you and it, just need to add those two words.
Yep.
What is under employee, we have, it's, um, the definition under section two, where it says employee, it says paid by the city or add the words serving as authorized city volunteers.
Does anyone else want to give up their copy? I have actually a real quick one, too. I don't know if there's any answers.
Anyone have one that they didn't write on? Otherwise, we'll do it.
All right, done, no worries.
We, we got her.
Okay, we'll get you.
Yeah, we'll get you clean.
Thank you.
Um, so you got that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the 2024, oh, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a 2024 reappraisal order with an anticipated vote. So, um, my zoning administrator, please, rise.
So what you have in front of you is what was expected, we did trigger, uh, for a citywide reappraisal, the actual order is, uh, the initial step is to acknowledge the receipt of it, that's what we're asking you to sign tonight, that will start the process. You then have until November 15th to come up with a detailed compliance plan, right now, in all practical purposes, I'd like to have them a draft by the middle of September. The compliance plan is not all that complicated, it's lengthy, uh, the most important piece of it is that, uh, there's a budget and evidence that the city is going to fund that budget, okay, so we're looking at making that decision by sometime around the first of September, which isn't really all that far away. I can go into it a great more detail, but you've got a lot on your plate, if you have any questions on it.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Charbonneau, do you have any questions?
I do not.
So, um, Mr. Cheney, I just want to make sure that we're getting you the motion that you need, are you just looking for authorization to respond to?
No, so see the letter, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I need somebody to sign that. Yeah. So I can send it back to them, so we can acknowledge that we understand that we have to do this.
So can I have a motion for, uh, authorization for the city manager to, uh, sign the Newport City Municipal Response reappraisal order?
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. Jay Walsh.
Good evening, Jay Walsh, Newport resident, um, I've got a question as to how this process is to go forward, since last year, uh, the legislature passed a, a bill for eighty to, um, take on all of these municipal reappraisals. The language in that is, is quite confusing, it goes between the city or town doing it and the state doing it, um, I'm just wondering if we have the answers as to, uh, whether we're going to get paid by the state, which they've said in that bill that they will, per parcel, uh, for us to do this appraisal, it's not going to be cheap, and, or if the state is actually going to conduct the reappraisal.
Ah, so it's a, a little bit of a complicated question, first of all, the state, look
Thank you.
The state has already been paying you for the reappraisal, it is woefully not sufficient, and we have been adding to that for the last year, and we're going to have some time to add to it going forward. Can't actually tell you that we're funding it fully yet, because until we see the actual numbers from the reappraisal cost, a lot of that depends on how much we do and how much we ask the consultant to do, uh, and that will be a discussion that we can have before we finalize the IRPS, as far as the other thing, Jay's correct in that, there was a study done and a recommendation made, uh, that the state of Vermont, uh, i- is considering taking over all appraisals in the state of Vermont, and not just reappraisals, but ongoing appraisals as well. That obviously would be a big step, okay, and they're not going to do it lightly, they don't even have support of their own body, PBR, uh, they are in the process now of doing an evaluation for the, for the next year, uh, to ascertain whether or not this is feasible. Uh, I will caution you, Jim and I have had this conversation, and I know this is not the question on that, um, but
That's okay.
Be careful that when you give up your revenue, they will start telling you what you do with your expense, just like the school systems and the doing when we did, when we had that. So when this comes up, we do need to have a conversation, because I think we do, do need to weigh in on it. They want to standardize the assessment process, that's actually necessary, there's too much discrepancy between the towns, and that creates a situation where it's not equitable as far as the school funding and the state, however, in my opinion, having the state take it over is not the best choice.
Thank you.
Okay, that answered your question.
Ms. Grant?
Lori Brem, Newport, as I understand from previous, uh, conversations about this, do we have a timeline, and I, I recognize it's not immediate, but I think from what I've heard in the past, it's going to be a couple of years down the road before it will actually start, just wondering if we have a clue.
Thank you. Jim?
It depends on who you go with to a certain extent, however, most of the companies are scheduling out to 2027 right now, and that is, that is not the completion, but the beginning of the process. Okay, my advice would be to you is that you invest into this area and start the process early, so that it doesn't take quite as long as that, because I think in the long run, the citywide appraisal will be a good thing for the floor.
That answered your question?
Yes. Okay. Remember that, I'm being
Jay Walsh, I know, I just didn't want to get into additional items, but to, um, back up what Frank is saying about, uh, it would be important to have a new appraisal, um, I was an appraiser for what essentially was a county, uh, one of eight, um, about the size of Massachusetts, so we reappraised everything every year, wasn't an easy job, but, uh, here we're doing it about every five years or so, um, and having that correct plays into our, uh, what you set for the city, um, tax rate and what revenues come into the city. Looking over a couple of hundred parcels between residential and commercial, I can see that they're woefully underappraised, uh, and that's not just because of the increase in value of this last year, this is probably five or more, at least as long as, uh, the last appraisal, they're, they're way off and quite skewed, so I, I would support having a reappraisal, uh, that being said, I think it's mindful that, uh, a lot of these properties are going to change dramatically, and that the tax rate be adjusted appropriately to accommodate for that. Also, I think it's important to, to recognize that, um, of the total taxable amount that we have in town, I think Frank said, something like $300 million worth of value for the city, uh, 72 million of that are tax exempt, uh, the state says that we have 80 properties that are tax exempt that account for that 72 million, and after looking at the jail, hospital, state buildings, uh, county courthouse, city office buildings and land, schools and school administration buildings, religious institutions, the armory, the library, um, it would be ideal to have a breakdown of, uh, those properties and what their values are, or what the city owns, what, um, the, uh, the county owns for, for land in our city that, or land in our city that is being exempted, just so that, you know, it amounts to some 26% of our overall value.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? We have Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a name. Ayes have it, the motion is carried and the city manager will sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, um, health officer appointment with an anticipated vote. We pretty much had done, um, a vote to have the interim fire chief be the health officer. With the interim change right now, this is like an updated paperwork cleanup. And so we need to be able to have this form updated and we will continually update it if there are any changes. So, um, we need a motion, please, to have the town health officer appointment information updated with the Department of Health.
Mr. Johnson. Some more.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions? Ready for the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a name. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Jonathan, I'm going to sign. You'll fill it and I can still sign it for you. Yeah, you know. I'm good here. Sorry, thank you. Okay.
This is a little bit of housekeeping. I see you're still using the term interim fire chief of Mr. Delugria. Is that going to at some point be a permanent position? Or you still seeking to find a permanent fire chief or what, what does that look like?
So I would invite you to come to the council meeting when the fire chief.
Say that again?
I invite you to come to the council meeting when the fire chief position is on the agenda, which should be coming up soon, and we can get into that discussion.
Okay, and is this interim health officer appointment or is it health officer?
The health officer is the, uh, permanent appointment. It goes with the fire chief, but because we had, um, Kevin, who was our interim on there on the paperwork.
Kevin, Kevin McCos.
Yes.
Kevin, Kevin McCos.
Correct, I'm sorry. And so now we need to update that paperwork so that, um, Jonathan is on there.
When did that appointment expire? Does it expire when?
No, we have a law for that.
For three years.
Three years or something, right?
So it's three years from tonight?
Well, it will be updated, so it was probably three years from when the Department of Health sent it over, but I don't have the exact date, so we would have to check that for you and we can
It was 27, I don't know the exact date.
And we can find that out for you.
If you would.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But I, when I'm seeing you, the Okay, so the next item on the agenda is evaluation of an employee potential executive session according to 1VSA 313A3. So may I please have a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with 1VSA 313A3 to discuss evaluation of an employee and to invite the city manager into that session.
Some more.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a name. Ayes have it.
For the qualification, for the question, uh, Mayor, Mayor, is the city manager the only non-city council member going to executive session with you?
Yes. We are now in executive session. We are out of executive session, no action has been taken. The next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. When your name, oh, no, wait, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, we're going to open the Florida public comment. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public I'm sorry, are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings and that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the public's guidelines when participating in the meeting. I thank you. Okay, when your name is called, please identify yourself, speak into the microphone, speak through the mayor. Do not engage in conversations. And you will have two minutes. I ask the city manager to let us know when thirty seconds are left. Here we go. Ms. Gierling.
Jennifer Gierling, resident Newport, Vermont. Madam Mayor, at some point in the past, in one of your multitude of articles, you stated that I had a fixation on the mayor and that it creeped people out. I would suggest that this is basic projection and that it is you who has the fixation upon me. I simply respond to your misrepresentations, false allegations and lies. Your recent dispatch from the mayor is a perfect example. For whatever reason, you are fixated upon the fact that I am a high school teacher who holds a law license. You have relentlessly misrepresented me as a practicing attorney. Why? What perceived benefit do you believe arises from misrepresenting me as a practicing attorney? In your dispatch article, you write about me for three short paragraphs. And in those three short paragraphs, you refer to me as an attorney eleven times. Further, you state, quote, "You will also note that Attorney, Attorney Gierling once again tries to renew her slanted storyline." She is quoted as stating that she asked for an internal forensic audit. Everyone knows this is false. She requested a forensic audit. Well, Madam Mayor, if everyone perceives my request of an internal forensic audit to be false, it's because you lied to them. At the August 7th council meeting at minute marker seventeen fifteen, I am on tape asking for an internal forensic audit during public comments. At the September 18th council meeting at minute marker one hour thirty minutes and fifty milliseconds, I am on tape asking for an internal forensic audit. In your article, you never supply a shred of evidence in regard to your deep dive, rather wordsmithing your way around the issue by stating Attorney Gierling is clueless as to what the mayor does and doesn't do. This is simply a clever dodge of accountability. In closing, a resident has a statutory and constitutional right to hold one's municipal officials accountable. When a resident exercises that right, it is completely unacceptable for the mayor to retaliate with lies aimed to defame the resident in a news article.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Barnes?
Good evening, Beth Barnes, Newport. There is a targeted national debate asking, are the presidential candidates fit to serve? Serving as an elected official at any level requires endless energy, stamina, rigorous mental acuity and honesty to oneself and one's constituents. On July 9th, I wrote with concern to Councilman Charbonneau. Dear Kevin, I noticed twice, twice last night that you drifted off to sleep during the meeting. I would respectfully request that during meetings, you as an elected official remain alert and awake. An excerpt of his response reads, "Heat combined with fatigue sometimes is stronger than my willpower to resist it and continue the facade that all is well." He goes on to ask me for suggestions on how to mask his condition. I understand that his condition creates many barriers to maintaining the rigorous and demanding schedule required to serve on the council. In his emails, he freely admits to putting on a facade that all is well. These are tumultuous times in Newport with many important issues on the table. I do not believe Councilman Charbonneau, uh, should be allowed to fall asleep during meetings and maybe not continue to serve in this rigorous and demanding role. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Graham?
Laurie Graham, City of Newport. At the end of last week's special city council meeting, Treasurer Jim Johnson called into question a Facebook post of mine where, in his words, "I had mentioned the treasurer's office in relation to several things, including accounts, rate hikes and misappropriation of funds." This is a direct quote from the Newport, Vermont hopes Facebook group and my post. Newport residents need to watch this in relation to the video from the evening before. Our city is in a financial crisis brought on by the previous city manager, mayor and council members, as well as a possible lack of proper attention to certain accounts by the treasurer's office. Period. Water into a rate hike sparks soon. Period. And one city council member has decided that public character assassination on another council member is the way to go. Signing. After the meeting, I was also approached by a city resident who told me that at least four members of the public had told Mr. Johnson about the post because he's not on Facebook and that he was told I was or must be after him for his job. That is not true. And I was told that I should have met with him about the issues prior to posting. I would like to make it clear that as that, number one, as you can tell from what I've read to you, I have never mentioned anything about misappropriation of funds in that post and never accused that office of being the ones to set the tax rate. Number two, I have talked to Mr. Johnson in the past and knew that he had said that his staff had told him about the, the prison water meter and that he'd given the information to the appropriate people. My concern is that this went on for five to six years and apparently the appropriate people did not have enough concern. And so what I can tell from that is that I suspect that former city manager and the director of public works knew about the situation and failed, uh, in their course of regular business over five to six years to take care of it. We can make lots of assumptions about what has happened during the five to six years, but this situation needs to be resolved sooner rather than later.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Lance? Okay, um, I just want to bring up that it is important that, um, if people are taping the mayor, council member, city manager, that if there's attorney-client information that is appropriately being relayed to, um, those particular parties, that those tapes should not be shared with third parties so that they have this attorney-client privilege information. It should also, um, be quite apparent to the public that there should be no interference with attorney-client relationships with their client by making potential threats so that there could be bar complaints brought against the attorneys if they don't validate that somebody is not telling the truth if that's their client. So I ask you to think through what you do, okay? For those who are licensed professionals, if this happens, please understand that it is appropriate to notify the professional regulations board when things happen. Next, new business. President Fashan? Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
City manager?
No, thank you.
I have, um, something I would like to read, please. This is from the office of the mayor. This is executive order number 2024-01. Civility and professionalism. Whereas, the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city, he or she shall use their best efforts to ensure that the laws and city ordinances are enforced and that the duties of all subordinate officers are faithfully performed. And, whereas the city council is comprised of an elected mayor and board of aldermen, and whereas together, these elected officials are responsible for all fiscal, prudential and municipal affairs of the city of Newport. And whereas, it has come to the mayor's attention that the board of aldermen may have at times communicated in an unprofessional and uncivil manner with city employees. And whereas, these unprofessional and uncivil communications have affected employee productivity and interfered with the city's operations. And whereas, as elected officials, the city council must act with integrity and adhere to the highest ethical standards. And whereas, affected employees have felt powerless to raise concerns relating to such interactions with their supervisors, department head or city manager, or feel they do not have the resources to do so. And whereas, the city of Newport places the highest value on our employees and their well-being. And whereas, it has come to my attention as mayor that communications between members of the city council and the city's employees have at times been disrespectful, rude and unprofessional. And whereas, the city of Newport and its citizens are best served by its employees and elected officials when communications among and between employees and elected officials are civil and professional. Now therefore, Islander Joy Sullivan, mayor of Newport, hereby resolve that all communications, whether in person or conveyed electronically, by and between the city council and the city's employees, shall at all times be civil, courteous, professional and respectful. It is the responsibility of each of the city's elected officials and the city's employees to treat each other with dignity and respect. Employees who are treated uncivilly, discourteously and unprofessionally by an elected official are encouraged to report such incidents, whether in person or by electronic means to the mayor, or if the mayor is unable to act in her stead to the president of the council with a copy to the mayor. These reports shall be investigated as appropriate to determine whether the communications were inappropriate and unprofessional. Communications determined to be inappropriate may result in the city council considering censure against the city councillor. Under no circumstances shall an employee be discriminated against or retaliated against for making a report or participating in any investigation of a report. Furthermore, it has come to the mayor's attention that the employees may have at times communicated in an unprofessional and uncivil manner with fellow aldermen or in communications directed at said alderman. Therefore, it is the responsibility of each of the city's employees to treat the city's elected officials with dignity and respect. And city elected officials who are treated uncivilly, discourteously and unprofessionally by an employee or fellow elected official are encouraged to report such incidents, whether in person or by electronic means to the mayor, or if the mayor is unable to act, in her stead, the president of the council with a copy to the mayor. These reports shall be investigated as appropriate to determine whether the communications were inappropriate, unprofessional and insubordinate. Communications determined to be inappropriate, unprofessional and insubordinate may result in the city council considering appropriate directives and actions to be taken regarding said employees. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I pop you in?
I think it is, yeah. Old business. Councilmember President Fashan?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Uffrey Chase?
Yes, one brief item. I just request that we not lose sight in the midst of all the other things we're juggling of the request to return to the personnel policy. of the request to return to the personnel policy.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yeah, I make a comment. I thank Lori for clarification on that article. I don't do Facebook, I'm going from memory. But everybody be aware, if I feel my office is being unduly criticized, I will respond.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you.
Okay, and then on old business, please be advised that we are going to continue to focus on the numbers and the water sewer real-time salaries as a priority. Next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting, the regularly scheduled council meeting will be August 5, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Some more.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post Aye. Post, sorry. Post Aye. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn at 8:35 PM?
Some more.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post Aye. I'm so sorry. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you.